And welcome to the Yeah, I'm glad. Welcome to the Thursday, May 21st, 2020 OC and BOC's Board of Education meeting conducted via Zoom. I'd like to ask Mark Pettit to lead us in the pledges of the flag. The edge of good effort.
My allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark, would you now do the roll call?
Mr. Bronson.
Here.
Crabtree.
Here.
Morenas.
Here.
Murphy. Murphy.
Here.
Ms. O'Reilly. Mr. Pachkowski.
Here.
Ms. Perry.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Ms. Wosman. Ms. Wosman.
No, I think she's absent.
Ms. Weising.
Here.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, welcome to all of you, and I'd like to take this moment to congratulate Don Reeves, Ms. O'Reilly, and Christopher Hockey for running for a three-year term and winning. We're so delighted to have you join us for another three years. So, welcome again.
Sure, it's not condolences?
No. No, I won't let it be. We'll go on to the board reports. I thought that they were very interesting because this is an interesting time for us, very different from what used to. But I'd like to thank publicly Frito-Lay's for sending two trailer loads of Frito-Lay's to distribute to our schoolchildren. I thought that was a very nice gesture. And I'd like to thank all the people at the RIC who take care of the Zoom stuff that we have because it's very complicated and it's enough for us to just understand what we have to push in for a password. So, thank you very much. We really appreciate what you've done for us. We'll move on to routine. Are there any comments on board reports? Okay. We'll go to routine business minutes of the April 16th regular Board of Education meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Where's my computer moving around here?
It's Michael's screen.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, could I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Murphy.
Okay, in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post your extensions?
One extension, Ms. Perry.
Thank you. Motion carries. Number two, three, four, and five will take together. Budget status report dated May 11th, 2020. Revenue status report dated May 11th, 2020. Treasurers report dated March 2020. And claims auditors report dated May 12th, 2020. Any questions or additions or corrections on those? If not, could I have a motion to accept?
So moved, Jody.
Second?
Second, Jody.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post your extensions. Motion carries.
You can back up one second there.
Certainly.
Who made the motion on that one? Jody's seconded, I heard.
Well, Jody's, the Peg made the motion then, I guess. If you got, Jody is the second.
We work well together, Peg.
That's right.
Number six and seven are for information only. We'll move on to the president's report. There's not really been any events, but I'd like to remind you that there's going to be a Tools for Success Award Zoom, which is going to be on March, March, I'm sorry, May 26th at 3:00 PM. And you have the information that was given to us by Colleen. So, if you need it again, let us know. But it should be a wonderful thing to watch. Committee reports. We have a policy committee meeting this evening. Would you like to tell us a little bit about it, Mike?
We did. We had packets from March, April, and May that we reviewed. There were 28 policies total. We got through those because I have a great committee in 45 minutes. And at least 22 of the 20 will be coming to you for June. If not all 28, we have five or six where we're doing a little back checking to make sure language and/or some of the ancillaries are, as drafted, are correct. So, and that would conclude our three-year cycle. We anticipate meeting in June to set up the next three-year cycle, to do a little lessons learned review. And close out our year.
Ms. O'Reilly will be replacing you as the chair of that on July 1st, Mike.
Excellent choice.
She served her time with it.
Thank you. Next item is a nomination for Sandra Ruffo as the Area Ford Director for NISBA, who will represent us. She has, this is her fourth term that she's running for. So, are there any comments from any of the board members?
I'd just like to say, I've met her a few times. She's, her work ethic is phenomenal. She's come to a lot of events for the Central New York School Board. So, I like to make the nomination, I like to make the motion for her nomination.
I'll second.
Thank you, both of you.
I'll second. I agree with Bob.
Oh, yeah.
Even though it's hard to admit it, but I agree with Bob.
I agree too.
She's continuing her service as the second vice president of the NISBA, which is, I think, wonderful. I think she may be the first person that I remember in that kind of a role. It was always somebody downstate that had those. So, I'm very proud of the things that she's doing for us. But I have a motion to accept.
You got it.
Yeah. Bob and I did it. Bob and Joan.
Make the motion.
We did. Bob made the motion. I seconded it.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. Chris, Tom, are you still with us?
I'm certainly with you.
Hi there.
I put a tie on for you.
Okay, good. How come I can't see you?
I don't know, but I already know I'm probably not wearing shoes. So, we've heard a lot from the governor today that that actually answered a lot of questions that we had. We know that summer school will be virtual and that that was determined today. We also know that the plan is for him and his folks to come up with criteria and deliver those criteria for what reopening might look like in June to our districts with plans being submitted in July. We don't know the specific dates on when we'll get the criteria for what the plans will have to include. But I would imagine that they will include, you know, a multitude of different scenarios, whether we're open, whether we're open with social distancing, whether we're just full-on open, like what are we going to do with PPE? How can we ensure some things? More questions and answers there. But interestingly, the timeline of a submittal by districts by the middle of July will coincide or not coincide with the Regents Task Course on reopening. The Regents Task Force on reopening was announced a couple of weeks ago after the reopening New York Task Course was by the governor. The interesting part about that is that they're trying to put together what it looks like the Regents are at this point. And it looks like they're attempting to do some things virtually, gather some information. And their plan for reopening in New York State coincidentally also supposed to be out mid-July. So, the plan that the Regents Task Force will come up with will come out the same time that districts will be required to submit. So, stay tuned to that one, folks. Obviously, there's some competing forces there, but what we're going to do is we're going to concentrate locally. We're going to see what the criteria are. This BOC's, like every other BOC's, will do their best to lead because I'm sure the initial development of plans will be complex and might even seem slightly overwhelming. But I can assure you that the team that you see before you and the team of BOC's personnel across the state are already thinking about what these might look like. And questions have already been asked about many, many, many things. So, I just want to assure you that when our districts are faced with this, that you have the right team to help them see this through. And I know that BOC's across the entire state are going to take the lead on helping them through this. Interesting fact about teacher, moving on to teacher certification and flexibility. As we know, oftentimes teachers' certifications tend to expire if they have a couple of things missing. And sometimes it's literally just something going into the teach system and it just not being there in time. And under these circumstances, obviously, many of our teachers that may have been missing something relatively simple will not be able to do what they need to do to maintain their teaching certification. So, the Regents have pushed out the extension date to July of 2021. There was an omission in their submission at the Board of Regents meeting this month. They did not include TAs and they did not include coaching certifications. So, we've made the suggestion that in the June board meeting that they add TAs and coaching certifications with the same parameters around that as they did for teachers. So, you know, and they're going to move on that. I'm sure leaving out teacher assistance was simply an oversight omission. As I can imagine, and you can imagine, the amount of stuff that's on the plate of the Board of Regents for everything they have to, they have to change every time we get a new executive order. It was just an oversight. So, with that, I'll take any questions. Things are moving fast. Like, we waited a long time to get a lot of answers. And now, it appears as though the answers are coming quickly. The only answer we don't have is the button. We were expecting possibly something on the 15th. That became unrealistic. Clearly, they're waiting on a federal aid package that would include state and locals to be funded. Without state and local being funded, the cuts that the governor would initially have to make would be, I believe, catastrophic. So, what we're hoping for is if we do get a number before the end of May, because apparently that, they keep kicking the can down the road, and I can't blame them. I would not want my legacy to be, I cut 10% from an education budget in one year. So, we're anticipating that we'll see some numbers by the end of May based on the press conference that was held on Monday when they said, hey, what's your drop dead date? And they said, really? By the end of May? So, you know, I feel bad for the home districts and the superintendents and the business officials because they've been ready, they've been sitting on pins and needles, they've been working exceptionally hard. And that number is going to come, apparently, this number is going to come very, very late. I would imagine right at the end of May now, and this is the end of May. So, the hope, the one thing that could be hopeful is that if we see that there's a possibility of a federal package coming in and that state and local would be funded, that maybe the initial cut isn't as severe as we once thought it might be. But none of us know that. Anybody who says they know that, they don't know anything. But what we can look at, and as I look across the nation, when you see state revenues coming in, in some of the southern states, you know, unfortunately, this is a political conversation. It shouldn't be, but it is. When you see southern state revenues coming in at shortfalls of 30 and 40%, there is a very good chance that at some point, state and local will have to be funded for all states. And I think we're sort of banking on seeing the numbers come in and hopefully, some of the southern states that are going to be hurting will push the Congress to a place where they think that funding state and local is worthy. And now, I'm done.
Thank you very much. It's very interesting. And next month, you probably will have another spiel that they all have given you. So, thanks for doing that, Chris.
Any impact on tenures or the tenure process as we're going through this?
Dave, it's a great question. We've been pushing, we've been pushing for an executive order that would sort of put an end to the APPR process and push it out for a year. And we still haven't gotten anything. So, right now, folks are literally faced with the possibility of tenure by a stopple, telling people that they're not going to retain them, or entering into jewel agreements. And I think what you're seeing is an unprecedented amount of jewel agreements as we move through this, as we're waiting and waiting and waiting. Because our timelines are different than theirs, and this is still not very high on their list. But great question, Dave.
Any more questions?
Yeah, any idea when we'll get a new commissioner?
No. They are actively seeking, applications are due, I believe, at the end of, mid-June, at the end of June. And they want to start the process in the summertime. But starting the process in the summertime is completely predicated on what the initial application pool would look like. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Chris, thank you very much.
You're welcome, man. Thank you.
We'll move on to administrators' reports. Are there any? About all business? If not, let's go on to personnel. The personnel has an additional agenda that you haven't seen. So, I will give you a little chance to look at that in your computer. I'd like to say that Mary Ann Wilson, who's been employed by us as an itinerant audiologist, is retiring, and we wish her well. And there is a tenure appointment in the process you're looking through. And I'd like to congratulate the staff because you get through all those interviews, DAs. There's millions of them, and it's got to be raining.
I'd just like to say a couple of things. The tenure of Ryan Oyer, I've had the privilege to meet him quite a number of times. It's awesome that he works for BOC's. He too has a work ethic. If you ever see him, wherever he is, Crown Road, Thompson Road, he is always there, and he's very supportive of our special needs kids. And then, I see Danielle's on board, our new administrator. I saw her name come across. So, welcome, Danielle. She'll be the new, one of the new administrators at Crown Road. And then Tara Paulus will be working with the deaf children at Salve. So, welcome to those people.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Danielle.
Now, if you've looked at your supplemental agenda, could I ask for a motion to accept?
Please move.
Luke seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We move on to new business. Business number one and two are for information only. We will take bids through technology agreements, number three through 13. Are there any questions on any of these? Matt, could I have a motion to accept, number three through 13?
Wayne, move. Mike Murphy.
Move in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post your extensions. Motion carries. Let's take 14 by itself. If somebody from the administration side would like to talk about this, I'd be appreciative.
Andrew's most good to speak to it.
We're trying to work through some echoes here. You know, what you're going to see in these next few resolutions is our annual request. Do you have the authority to fund our reserves? And this decision is made when we're closing our books. It's not made at this time. But that's the strategy as required by the control that we obtained the approval of our board to fund reserves.
Any questions, ladies and gentlemen?
Now, this money comes with, I'm going to say, the approval of the components, that we can keep this as surplus as opposed to giving a refund?
Annually, we make an assessment on what we think we should fund the reserves amounts at and also be consistent and aware of what the refund should be for our components.
Okay.
And while it says up to, it's not typically those amounts, but we have that there just in the event that we're able to do it.
Okay.
And we're comfortable with each of those upper limits that will be at or below that when the final numbers shake out?
Yes, Andrew and I reviewed where we are with that, and we're both comfortable with it.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? If not, number 14 will be our first one. Could I have a motion to accept, number 14?
So moved, Mike Murphy.
Second?
David.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post your extensions. Motion carries. Number 15 is unemployment insurance, $500,000. Any questions on that? If not, could I have a motion to accept?
Luke moves.
Second?
Luke or Wayne?
Okay.
I didn't.
We have a move in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Extension, motion carries. Number 16 is a $1 million surplus fund to fund the previously established ERS retirement contribution reserve fund. But if any questions? Motion to accept?
So moved, David.
Second, Jody.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post your extensions. Motion carries. Number 17 is the use of $695,000 of surplus funds for the school year through transfer from the ERS Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund. Any questions? Could I have a motion to accept?
Peg moves.
Luke second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post your extensions. Motion carries. Approval of the use of up to $100,000 of surplus funds from the 2019-2020 school year to additionally fund the previously established liability reserve fund. But I have a motion, first, do I have any questions? Could I have a motion to accept?
So moved, David.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post your extensions. Motion carries. We move on to other business. There'll also be individual. Number one is the approval of the Revenue Anticipation Note Resolution, not to exceed $12 million. Those are known as RAMs. RAMs. Could I, any questions?
How does that compare to last year's?
They use that same amount every year to give us flexibility. Last year, we ended up with a rand of $7 million. And we would expect that we might want to go a little higher because we're concerned about cash flow coming through our districts. And as you know, we need to collect from our districts in order to make our bills.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to accept?
David, so moved.
Second?
Mike, so second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post your extension. Motion carries.
It's not a roll call vote for that?
I've never done a roll call vote, go to it.
Sometimes on bond, we have before. Revenue anticipation notes, I think we have in our district. That's all.
Board clerk?
Let's say that I've attended these meetings many years. We've never done a roll call vote until we came to these. So, I've never heard of a roll call vote in this particular area. But I will now defer to the school's attorney.
Well done.
What do you think, Joe?
Well, I would say, out of abundance of caution, we could do a roll call vote to assure that we're in compliance. But I would have to look to make sure. That would be the safer option.
Joan, you're a problem.
It's not a problem.
I'm doing my job.
Might as well.
We'll do a roll call vote. New business, number one, approval of a revenue anticipation note. There's going to move by Dave and second by Mike. I'll now do a roll call. Mr. Bronson?
Aye.
To Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Morenas?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. O'Reilly?
Aye.
Ms. Pachkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Petz, sorry. Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Ms. Reeves?
Aye.
Weising?
Aye.
Ms. Wright?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, motion carries, right?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to number two, approval of the 2020-2021 summary program budget. Does anybody have any questions on this? If no questions, motion to accept?
So moved, Jody.
Second, Luke.
We'll move in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post your extensions. Motion carries. Number three is authorization for duly designated purchase agent to award contracts based on the bids received for the augmented reality welding system. Any questions?
What's the reason for needing to do it outside of a board meeting?
Because of the situation that we're in with COVID-19. We've been doing the best we can to try and provide education for our students virtually. But we're trying to get these virtual welders, which will allow our students a much better opportunity to learn the hands-on welding virtually. And we just don't want to have another month go by in order to do that. So, we're asking for the board's permission.
Okay.
So, that means you can use avatars, right? Joan, will you join in on?
I'm familiar with the piece of equipment, and generally, it requires, as far as I know, the user has to be physically present with the piece of equipment to do the job. So, it's not going to allow, unless this is something new, it's not going to allow work.
Well, I guess I'm going to defer to Mari because when I spoke with her about it, it was my understanding that it was virtual. So, I'm going to defer to you, Mari.
Gordy's looked at these, and they're ones that we can allow the students to take home. So, we're going to sign them out to students to take home. They're in a suitcase so that they can be transported to a student. They can sign them out for a couple of days and then come back and go to another student.
I stand corrected. This is new technology I haven't had my hands on. Thanks.
Do we have an estimated idea of what these cost?
They're expensive, so they run to the tune of around $20,000. But the good news is we are receiving CARES Act money as a result from the federal government and that the money is specifically supposed to be targeted for ways to support students during virtual learning. So, this seems like, in my opinion, a very appropriate expenditure of those funds and exactly what they're intended to do.
It's also one-third to one-half the price that the former equipment was.
Okay. How many do we anticipate getting, depending on the bids?
Really going to purchase two.
Okay.
Any further conversation on this? Matt, could I have a motion to accept?
So moved, Wayne.
Second?
Second, David.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post your extension. Motion carries. Number four, approval of memorandum of agreement between Anadog and Port Lament. Number four, approval of memorandum of agreement between Anadog and Portland Madison Bosse's and the Federation of Teachers. Are any questions on this?
So move, Bob.
If not. Okay, second?
John, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number five, approval of memorandum of agreement between Anadog and Portland Madison Bosse's and the Portland Anadog and Madison Bosse's organization. Any questions? Could I have a motion to accept?
So moved, Peg.
Second, Luke.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Poster extensions. Motion carries. Number six, approval of memorandum of agreement between Anadog and Portland Madison Bosse's and the Mid-Level Administrators Association. Any question? Matt, could I have a motion to accept?
So move, David.
Second, Wayne.
Move, second. Okay, why, first one? Move it.
David.
I hear it's static.
David.
Okay, we'll vote on it. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Poster extensions. Motion carries. Something's not quite right. It's, it's.
You're probably freezing. Think you're freezing, Anne.
No, it's just, it's, there's static in this, I can't.
It could be the result of your internet.
Approval of the intermunicipal agreement for providing the technology service between the Anadog and Portland Madison Bosse's and the Manly's Fire Department. Any questions?
So move.
Motion to accept?
Wayne made the motion to accept.
So move, seconds.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Poster extensions. Motion carries. We'll take number eight, nine, and 10. They're all statewide agreements for uh, the RIC. Any questions on any of these? About a second.
Anne, we haven't had anybody, uh, we, you cut out there. We don't have a, a motion and a second at this point.
Anne, can I make a suggestion? Sometimes if you turn your video off, it opens up enough bandwidth that your audio will come through a little bit better.
We don't want to look at you.
No.
Yeah, your video's frozen anyway.
Don't touch anything. Let's just keep going.
We're almost done.
Do I have a motion for the second for eight, nine, and 10?
So move.
So Wayne moved, who's second?
John.
John.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Poster extensions. Motion carries. Uh, let's take number eleven by itself. A district-wide safety team is detailed in the attached. And I have asked Jody if she would join this team as the board member that they needed in attendance. And she has agreed, so that, that's what you're agreeing to. And you have a list uh, amongst your paperwork that you can, can access. It tells you about this district-wide committee. Any further questions?
Nope.
I have a motion to accept?
David, so moved.
Lisa, seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Poster extensions. Motion carries. Approval of a revised 2019, 2020 OC and Bosse's school calendar for Portland County. Questions on that?
My only question is to Colleen, I, I think I know the answer. I believe Portland has to go an extra day and that's because of Christmas, right? There's an extra day for somebody at Christmas.
Like Portland, uh, so Portland ends a day before Anadog County because the Chris, Anadog County had a longer break at Christmas.
Right, and next year we won't have to worry about that because they're on the same, yep.
Correct. We have one calendar next year, which will be great.
Yeah. I so moved on these two. I move, Bob Crabtree.
Luke second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Poster extensions. Motion carries. Approval of a revised 2019, 2020 OC and Bosse's school calendar for Anadog County. Any questions? Have a motion to accept?
So moved. David.
Second, Peg.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Extensions. Motion carries. Thank you. Work of Education Roundtable. Any questions or any comments that you'd like to make about this?
I've got a couple. This is David. Um, I asked Colleen for just a, a little report or overview of what we're doing with CTE in distance learning when you're trying to do auto repair or collision repair, medical testing. How were we handling that?
Happy to, to address that. So um, I'd really like to give a lot of credit to Phil and the leadership team and the teachers and CTE and Tamari and adult education and her team because those are really the groups that are facing this. And they've done a lot of job, uh, an excellent job of researching what's available online for, for virtual simulations. So we have that happening in many of our programs, for example, in nursing. And the State Education Department, the Office of Professions has, has said that will be acceptable for clinical hours for our nursing students, so we're very grateful for that. We have teachers who are used to working in shops um, actually recording themselves, doing videos, posting them online to try and do demonstrations to show the students the skills. There are some courses where students will need to sit for licensing exams. And when the state allows us to open up our facilities, we're prepared to allow students to come in to get some of those hours that they may need to still complete hands-on. But I'm really proud of what that um, both CTE and adult education have been doing to address the hands-on learning during this virtual time.
And, and with that, I asked the question of, will the students still get their national certifications or attachments to diplomas?
And the, the good news there is that we're treated very much like um, the way they're handling the Regents exams. The fact that Regents exams are canceled, CTE. We have the same authority to uh, based on mastery of their standards and the skills, students can still earn a CTE endorsement on their high school diploma, so that's good news for our students, for sure.
Okay, I've got a second, second item for information. Can we get someone from the RIC to maybe give a procedure on how we can have Zoom on half a screen and board docs or whatever on a, a other portion of it?
I have a screen. During, when he started to do it, he actually put the screen up front here and it scrolled, the whole nine yards.
So that can be done. I actually thought we were doing that tonight, for why that.
It, it was on. It was on there for about 30 seconds and then I think Anne started talking and it went away and hasn't come back.
Yeah, so if we could get a some kind of
Yes.
Some kind of instructions on how to do it.
We'll work on that because I agree that would be thoughtful. We'll make sure that happens for our next meeting. Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, trying to look at an iPhone and whatever, doesn't quite work all the time.
I'm in trouble right now because it says Zoom is not responding. Can you hear me?
Yeah. We can hear you, but we can't see you, but don't worry about it.
Don't worry about us.
My question to Colleen is, and I know I, I don't know how this can be done, but in June, we always honor the retirees. I can't imagine uh, being a retiree. Haven't been in my classroom for two months. Are we planning to do anything or are we sending them a letter and a gift or what's happening for the retirees?
We are planning a retiree reception, so we'll still have our reception at 5:30 before our June board meeting. And we'll be honoring, um, inviting people to participate virtually. Our, our leaders are still preparing the remarks so we can speak about each of them. We are also getting the gift. I mean, we had an employee, just as a side, an employee recognition luncheon, or excuse me, a celebration today. And um, it went very well. We're still able to honor and celebrate people. And we sent the certificates home to people in advance, so they had them when they, uh, when we had our ceremony. And the feedback was really positive, so we're not foregoing celebrating, even though we're Zoom.
Awesome, thank you, Colleen. One, one last question for me. The summer school appointments. Did, we held them at the last meeting or whatever. When do we go through that and are we having any thoughts of, since we're using virtual? Do we need all the staff that we have or how are we handling summer?
We are, uh, we are meeting weekly with our summer school leaders. So Christopher Alvi and I are meeting with our summer school administrators and planning, and so we just met this afternoon. So we'll be putting forward names for summer school at the June board meeting. We are definitely anticipating needing a smaller number of staff. Certainly in extended school year programming for our special, special education students, we will not need the number of one-on-one teaching assistants that we typically do. Um, and so we'll be hiring most likely mainly program teaching assistants to be supporting the teacher. And where possible, we will be blending classes. In the past, we've had geographical locations and we won't have that as a barrier this year. So you could have students from Marathon Class and the same class as a student from Baldwin'sville, say. So I think we're trying to do it in, in a manner that's as affordable as possible. But I do anticipate the numbers being lower in summer school this year, for sure.
Good.
Any other, any other questions? If not, if there's something else to regular. Of course, that's employment of the person. I have a move.
Second, David.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Poster extensions. To the staff, thank you very much for being with us, except those of you who need to be in, of the business of the executive side.